Okay, it's six thirty. We have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. And just up, this is an open meeting. From the planning board, we have Joe Zagrodnik, Jim Maximowski, Bill Dwyer, Mike Sarzinski, and hopefully Mark Dunn will join us, but he's not on just yet. And with that, Mr. Dwyer, who's for open session?
Uh, first up is Keith Terry.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We have a site plan application, special permit site plan application that was submitted for a dental office construction on one oh one East Street in Hadley. Uh, would you like me to share my screen and show the plans?
Sure.
Okay, hold on. You're, you don't allow, uh, the host isn't allowing screen share at the moment.
Okay.
At any rate.
I can fix that.
Oh, all right.
All fixed.
Uh, let's try this again. Okay, so here's the, um, Russell Street is to the north of our parcel. East Street is to the east of the parcel, we're on a corner. And, um, there's an existing residential home and barn uh, on the property. The remainder is landscape and trees. The intention is to construct a building here in the middle of the site. We're going to enter uh, the site from East Street across from the bank on the other's corner. Uh, we're actually going to have employee parking closer to East Street and the, um, you know, the, uh, patrons will pa- will park further into the parcel, so we'll have a-
Where's the post office?
Oh, so the post office is on the opposite corner of us. Let me go back to the last. Well, the post office is on the opposite corner.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes. So we have the post offices east of East Street, the bank is east of East Street, and we're on the west. So that, that's the intent of the project.
Okay.
Is there a variance required? It seemed like you didn't have, uh, was it the front yard?
Yes, they need a variance for forty foot setback.
Okay.
I believe that you've applied for that?
So I understand, it's my understanding that, um, they sat and, and discussed it. I, I thought they had a, uh, an approval on that, but I will have to research-
I mean, we're, we're asking if you applied for a variance.
Yeah, I will have to research that. I don't know. I, I know that there was discussions with, with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Uh, so, I'm sorry. We, we also have submitted this, uh, we have a peer review in process with tie-in bond.
Can I just interrupt a second? Um, I was there at the ZBA meeting and Larry Tuttle was there with the proposal and, um, it did pass at the ZBA meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
So is the variance from East Street or from Russell Street?
East Street. I'm sorry, from Russell Street.
You need a variance from all streets.
Correct.
Yeah, they, they meant-
Oh, ninety-nine, you're ninety-nine foot, oh, you're ninety-nine feet back on East Street.
Uh, we're sixty-nine feet.
So sixty-nine, okay, like, so looking at the ninety-nine point two. Okay, you're a people from East because you're, you're more than fifty feet, okay. Okay.
And does this have the, the, uh, open space that it's required?
Yes, we feel we've, um, provided the open space. Um, so we have a site area of forty thousand nine hundred square feet. The building is four thousand eight hundred seventy-three square feet with pavement for a total of, um, impervious area of twenty-three thousand ninety-one square feet. So the air, open space provided is forty-three percent.
Wow, doesn't seem like that much, but I guess it's all spread out. Okay.
Okay, we got your application. Um, you've given us a butters list, but you didn't put it on mailing label, so you need to get us two copies of butters list on mailing labels.
So we, with our submission, the hard copy we dropped off had two sets of envelopes.
Where?
We dropped it off the town offices.
Where in the town offices? In our mailbox?
I didn't do it personally. I, I don't know who received it.
Okay, well, I mean, we need, I don't, I don't know where they are either. So, I mean, unless you tell us where they are, I'm not gonna go searching in the town hall. All you'd need to do is find out where they are and email Mr. Dwyer at planning@hadleyma.gov to let us know where these materials are.
Yep, okay.
I saw some envelopes in the planning board mailbox, but I could double check tomorrow.
Oh, okay. All right, if they're in the mailbox, that's fine. Okay, I just wanna know where they are.
Right.
We've had people drop them, but they, they say they dropped them off and they put them in. They are in a town hall, but people don't always let us get us to the right destination, that's all.
Sure.
If they're in it, if they're fine. Appreciate that, Kayla.
Are there elevations of the proposed building?
I, I have, I do not have elevations of, well, hold on. I don't think that I have elevations of, of the building in my-
Yeah, as in how the sides look instead of the-
We will need them for the hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Preferably one color rendering of what it will actually look like from, from Russell Street. Or basically from the corner of East Street and, um, Russell Street looking towards what the building will look like.
Yeah, that's great. I obviously will do that, absolutely.
Otherwise, I'm in the application, who is, who are you using for reviewing engineer?
Tie and bond.
Tie and bond, okay, that's fine. All right, um.
So can we just pin down with Kyle what, um, what's going to be a consistently good date for PVPC? Is it gonna be the first or the third meeting of the month?
I can do either of those, so I defer to the board if you have a preference.
We don't. Do you have a preference? For the rest of the year, which one is open for you?
Let's do third.
You're sorry, okay. Very good.
We like decisive.
Okay, so that means that we cannot schedule this for public hearing for Aug- uh, August sixth, so we'd have to bounce it to September.
Okay.
First Tuesday is the hearing.
Day after Labor Day.
Okay. Okay.
What's the street address of this again?
One oh one East Street.
Thank you.
So you're saying that the hearing is supposed to be the second of September?
Third.
Third, Tuesday, September third.
Sorry.
Is there a sidewalk being added by this project or the state on, um, on East Street coming down from the corner? Cause I saw that you had what looked like, uh, an accessible depressed curb there.
So the, the roadway reconstruction, um, they were under, they were in the process of building the sidewalks. Uh, so the sidewalks are constructed along Russell and along East Street to the extent of our frontage. We will have to, um, you know, dismantle, uh, the entrance that they've provided, the existing entrance they provided, and we'll have to cut in our, a new entrance where we, where we need it.
I don't remember where the curb, oh yeah, right, cause the curb cut is closer to the corner and you're, you're, which we prefer moving it further from the intersection.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, your public hearing will be scheduled for September third at six forty-five. And I will, I don't have a filing fee for yet because typically we get the cost of the legal notice and then we add a little to that for the postage and for the various town fees. But it'll probably be somewhere around five hundred plus or minus dollars.
Yes, great.
The vast majority of that is the legal notice.
Yep.
Okay. So you've got your email, give it, the let's see. You have your email, right?
Yeah, it's kateri@Hancock Associates and I've, I've already been, you know, conversing with Mr. Dwyer, Dwyer. Uh, so.
You should have, because I just sent it, uh, sent it around last week.
Okay.
I apologize for being late. I missed the first two minutes or so. Do we know what the existing building is that's being removed?
It's a, it's a residential home and barn.
And a barn, yeah.
And the barn is in the Route Nine right of way.
Yeah, uh, the home is in the Route Nine right away. It's not the barn.
For the extension of the L that connects the old house to the barn.
Is that Malik's old house? Henry Malik?
Couldn't tell you.
I don't know. Okay. Very good. See you on September third.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Paul Benjamin.
Hi, man. I get, did I get the prize for the longest running project in town yet, or?
You're, you're definitely in the run for it.
Okay, all right, well, I just want, you know, someday I wanna get in the Guinness Book and this might be it, okay? Anyways, you know, um, Acre formerly called Acre Brook, uh, or it was done under Acre Brook, and their place is now got eight homes, uh, four of which are occupied and one is about to be occupied shortly, um, and the others in mid-construction and there's two more, one already digging and the other one is, there are eight lots total that are gone out of the tent. Okay, um, we just need some clarification on a couple of things. One is that there was a requirement that says one street light will be required at the intersection of Lawrence Plain Road. At the corner, about fifteen, eighteen feet from the corner is an existing pole. And I would like to know if it's okay to use that for the light uh, for that corner, or do you require a new pole to be put up that close to the other one? Um, the electric company said they would put that in, there's no issue there. They put it in actually for free, the, the light, um, and charge just the monthly electric charge. So.
You have a plan or a photo that, that would show it?
I, you know, the, the lights themselves extend out and if I can get them at least to extend it in the direction of the corner as opposed to out over Route Forty-seven, I think it will provide more than enough light at the corner. Um, but I, I was hoping for some guidance here.
Yeah. I think right nearby there, when he, where it was, Mr. Benjamin is saying the pole is, should be fine.
Okay.
So is that okay? Do I need a vote? And then my other question is, um, the, uh, under supplementary conditions, it says the developer shall consult with the tree warden and plant new trees uh, in the tree belt designated by the tree warden prior to the acceptance of the roadway right of the town. Um, we had met originally, and I can't remember the gentleman's name back when we first bought the property, uh, which was been when the crash happened, which is what delayed us for the first seven years of this project. Um, and he had basically said plant, you know, put two trees on each lot and, you know, you can put whatever you want there. Uh, of course, he's long gone and, and, um, Scott McCarthy, I believe, is the new uh, tree warden. And when I talked to him, he was concerned that trees out by the street, you know, we're gonna get into, you know, roots, we're gonna tear the street up like he's experiencing in other parts of town. Um, and, uh, also on one side, we do have some underground utility, uh, uh, conduits. Uh, so my question is if we planted them just on the edge but on the private property, is that acceptable? If I put two trees of native, you know, uh, we, I, I think we ought to do a mix of trees, so in case, you know, in five or ten or twenty or thirty years, some type of new, new, uh, tree, uh, borer or something or disease comes through, you don't lose all the trees on the street. Um, if you have a nice mixture of trees, but, um, so, you know, maples, maybe some cherries, oak, what have you, but we'll, we'll go with native trees. My question is, is that okay if we put them on the, uh, lot side? Little bit in from the street so that the roots are far enough away from the street that they shouldn't interfere at any time and, and cause, you know, damage.
That seems reasonable.
I don't see a problem. I think, I think it's probably a good idea to put them on.
Yeah. Away- And that way the leaves won't fall on the street as well. I mean, you know, when you go around town, some of the, you know, like the, uh, uh, we live off of Middle Street and, you know, the trees are right on that sidewalk and it's, you know, the, it, the sidewalk's destroyed, you know. Um, okay, so the, we'll go ahead and, and do that. We're gonna not plant them till September because obviously August is a bad month to put trees in. Um, and I'll, I'll let Scott know the size and height of the trees and get him to, uh, sign off on that. And those were my two good questions. Um, we had a list of things that we needed to do to make the street acceptable for endorsement. We, we did the valve out front, we, the fire hydrant is, is correctly oriented. Um, I did the, um, I, I'm having a guy come by one more time. Uh, we did the cracks, of course, we do them every year. There doesn't seem to be much da- damage from over the winter, uh, for crack repair, but I'm gonna have my, when he comes over to do my property here, uh, in August, he'll do the, do the street over if it needs any, you know, he'll go up and down and hit those. And then I have a contract already in place to do the, um, uh, drainways to clean them out and also a couple of them. When Scott inspected them, had, uh, some, needed some pointing and we'll get all that done and signed off, uh, early August is my plan. Um, and then we would like to get on the Fall Town Meeting, uh, warrant for adoption of the street. Um, and so the question is, at that point, we can come back to you in sometime in August if we get the major pieces done, possibly not the trees planted. But I'll, you know, sign an affidavit if you need that, or, uh, you're holding one of the lots anyway. Um, and, um, then we can, um, if, I'm hopeful that you would then endorse the, uh, town meeting to take the street.
So the select board is opening the special town meeting warrant tomorrow night?
Okay.
I don't know when they are going to close it.
Yeah, I think the sixth of the, uh, we, uh, I was at, uh, meeting last night and I forget what the date was, but I think it was like that, uh, August sixth.
So. So you won't have, you won't have much more information by then, so, um, uh, I guess should we make a motion to put this on the town meeting warrant for acceptance subject to work being completed?
Does he, does he have all his ducks lined up? The as-built plan and, uh, acceptance from the DPW, et cetera, et cetera?
I believe he got all that from Scott.
Yep. Yeah, the only, the only thing Scott was waiting on was, uh, he said we should, instead of doing the, uh, drains, the storm sewers back in the winter, I said, why don't I wait till the summer? Because that way, if there's any, you know, anything that's accumulated before then, they'll be clean and perfectly done right at the time of acceptance, so that, you know, uh, that it's, it's recent, you know, as opposed to seven or eight months ago. And he agreed to that. Um, and I did, I did get a contract with, uh, Mohawk's gonna do the work for us.
Have we released all the lots?
We hold one.
You're holding one.
Okay.
Which I would love to have released, but we'll, uh, hopefully after you do the acceptance, we can get that done later this summer, I hope.
Yes.
Okay.
Or is there one lot left to be sold?
No, there's two. There, the, the two that are past the Hammerhead. There's one on the right that's about a little over an acre and there's one on the left that is about fifteen or sixteen acres. I mean, the other, the other thing that I would love to have consideration of is that the lot on the right um, is one acre, but it includes the, you know, there's the Hammerhead and then there's the, um, kinda circle that gives you the frontage, the, you know, for a cul-de-sac. And that means that you can't build within that and the right of way beyond that. But that's sort of, I mean, in a sense, it's a, it's a, a technique used to get that last, those last lots, um, have the frontage that they need. And the question is, since we're already locked, that, that is a lot, is it possible that the house could be shifted forward and make use of that space as part of the building envelope? Or is that a zoning issue?
What's? What's the, we'd have to see the plan for better discussion of that.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll come in another time for that, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and see if that's something you would agree to, okay?
Okay.
Um, doesn't have to be done tonight. I really just needed the clarifications on this tonight, so I can get things done and get the, uh, um, all the survey information in, in for the town meeting. All right, thank you very much for your time.
So it's still, I still have the question about what is the process for asking it to be get, to getting on the warrant for acceptance? Do we ask, do we propose it or do, uh, select board need to propose it?
The, typically the applicant requests that of the Board of Selectmen and the planning board and the DPW are-
That's right.
Get their input as to do they meet all the requirements, rather requirements and satisfying.
Okay. So I'll get my attorney to-
Paul, I suggest you get in touch with the select board office. You won't make tomorrow night's warrant, but I think they are having another meeting in, uh, in July.
Okay, all right. I will get on that right away and thank you so much for your help and advice.
Paul, we're, uh, we're meeting July twenty-fourth.
Okay. Thank you, Molly.
Okay, uh, that brings us to Ryan Little.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey, how's, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Uh, I am here representing Dave's Hot Chicken at Five South Maple Street in, uh, in Hadley. Share my screen. So, uh, uh, just a quick little recap, the last couple of meetings, we went over, uh, squaring up the building, you know, making sure we are under sixty-four square feet of actual signage. Um, on another rendering I can show briefly, just for another recap, or an elevation rather, is the Greek guy uh, that we talked about. And then last but not least, um, and hence why I am back on, you know, this week's meeting is the, uh, last pylon sign, uh, that we needed for approval, which was, uh, the comments were nothing to be internally lit, uh, which we are presenting here. Uh, this right now has no clock below, uh, on the existing side and we are not gonna be internally lighting it. Uh, we're still wrestling on how to illuminate it, um, versus if we want just a, um, single pendant directional light from, uh, the ground or maybe even attaching a uplit light somewhere near where the, to the left of the time clock. Uh, that won't be, uh, functional. So, but right now we just wanna present a non-illuminated sign as we figure out how to externally light it.
I think I would.
Well, you, you presented about halfway there. The critical part is the illumination, so, uh,
If you wanted to do, and I guess with your blessing, is if probably the illumin- uh, illumi- so light it up from the ground.
Light it up from the ground or a gooseneck? Can you have to show the rendering where it's gonna be and how much light there will be? Will it show on the street? It's, uh, will it reflect down to the street?
I would prefer down lighting.
A gooseneck down, you're right, Mark.
To minimize sky light pollution.
Ryan, this is one of the things I know, you know, a lot of people have been saying, we've been overly critical of, of signage. But from the planning board perspective, we we wanted to make some different rules and regulations. We brought it to a town meeting several, several years ago. And the town overwhelmingly do not want more signs, bigger signs and internally illuminated signs, so we're merely following the wishes of the, the town meeting and the townspeople, so uh, we're not trying to give you a hard time, we're just trying to apply the rules fairly.
Your pros, Ryan.
Speechless.
Oh.
Okay, well, if he comes back, we'll-
We'll get back though, okay.
Um, so, uh, Deborah was the next one in. Are you here to, for, with a specific question for us or just to see the show?
Is that?
Deborah Levinson.
I think Deborah's here as part of the Smart Growth.
Okay, so, all right, okay. Oh, Ryan's back.
And you're muted, Ryan.
Sorry about that, my computer died, but I got it back to life real quick.
Yeah, did you hear what Dr. Zagrodik said about the signage?
I heard, uh, preferred is gooseneck downlight, which we will do if that's definitely what, uh, the, um-
Why don't you tell him again what you said about trying, not trying to be rough to him, Joe?
Yeah, well, the fact is, uh, the planning board several years ago had some change in rules and regulations and asking for a little larger signs for buildings that were set back from the highway. And the town overwhelmingly voted it down, so uh, the town spoke to us at the town meeting and we're under obligations to follow the wishes of the town, so we're not trying to pick on you, Ryan, we just have to follow what is put forward.
Yeah, no, I absolutely get it. And then we're, we're willing to honestly do whatever the town allows us to do.
Okay. So, quite a lot of sign, you know, probably gooseneck lighting for a couple of reasons. It looks a little better than a ground up, but also less overhead light pollution to the sky. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, something like that would be great.
Okay, we, we, we'll move forward with that direction then.
Okay.
Uh, did you guys want to recap any of the other signage while we're here?
Sure. Sure.
Yep, so just back to, uh, the main, um, Dave's Hot Chicken, uh, linear sign, uh, this will be, uh, backlit um, with red illumination, you can see down here. And then s- similar to probably what we'll do now with the pylon is a non-illuminated chicken head signage, uh, with goosenecks above. And now we, we chose the pylon sign closest, because there were two pylons, uh, this is the one closest to, uh, the main road. Um, not illuminated and we will add, uh, goosenecks to this as well. I'm probably be two, I'm assuming. Um, on either side.
You're gonna keep the one pylon sign along North Maple Street or South Maple Street, correct?
Correct.
And the one inside will be gone.
Correct.
They can go back to the-
Directional signage, I think.
You know, the, uh, the building sign? Okay. That is, how big is that? That sign is-
Thirty square feet.
Okay, oh, that dimension is one, okay. Not, not, right, okay.
And then the ch- the chicken head is thirty-three point seven eight square feet.
Excellent. That should go right through.
Okay. And, and the chicken will not be illuminated, but the other one will?
Uh, correct.
It's got a halo back, backlit halo?
Uh, yes, sir.
I think he's got goosenecks on the chicken head.
He did.
Yep, we got, we're showing four goose necks.
You are showing ghost, 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 yeah. Okay, you are, that is illuminated, but it's, but it's got the, uh, gooseneck lighting, okay?
Yeah, and just not internally illuminated.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And then, yeah, same thing, uh, backlit halo lit, uh, linear Dave's hot sign on the side of the building.
Okay.
And the Greek door.
Yeah.
The, the white Dave's is opaque, not clear, right?
Correct. It is white.
Okay. The light won't shine through it?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions for the board? Entertaining motion?
Uh, one question, uh, do you, does this set of drawings have the, uh, the, uh, rendering of the structure as well?
Uh, no, let me, uh, stop sharing real quick and get that, uh,
Oh, yeah, we'd like to see a building section to verify the roof height.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the roof height at the existing twenty-four feet. Oh, that's not it. Okay. Back, okay. And this will show, this is, uh, our elevations that we'll, we're gonna start designing off of.
So you don't have a building cross-section yet?
Uh, no, not, not as of yet.
I think that's what you were looking for, um, Bill, right?
Right. When you said it's what you're designing off of, uh, we kind of like to see what we're gonna get.
I'm not, I kind of like an isometric three D picture.
Yeah, so how, how is this going to differ from what you were actually going to do?
How high will the parapet be above the roof?
Uh, so we, we're, we are gonna have the smallest parapet as we can. It might just be a couple inches or so. Uh, because we want to keep the roof line as high as possible. Go back to that rendering, sorry.
You know, we, we're not looking for construction blueprints, but we are looking for a realistic interpretation of what is going to go there. So when you say this is what you're gonna work off of, that makes me worry a little bit. I mean, it's, it is what it is, is a building. I can't say it's all that attractive, but it is what it is. So that's fine. If that's what you're, what you're gonna build, but I don't want to see something else show up than what you have already shown us.
No, absolutely. And we're not. I do actually, I believe, uh, the architect, give me one second. Uh, they had a little more formal elevations for us. One, sorry. Uh, so I, I do know the architect did provide, uh, some more detailed elevations. I can dig them up. But th- those elevations were sent to the design team, and the design team were the ones who altered that last, um, elevation that I just shared with the Greek guy on the side. So I gue- I guess, Mike, back to that, the question is, what else?
We'd like to see a rendering of what will the building look like?
Okay.
Say from, uh, probably from Russell, from, uh, South Maple Street.
So more of a angled rendering, I guess?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, yeah, we, I do not have those. I don't know if they could provide us a almost, um, Revit type model.
Since it's an existing structure, I'm, I could live without a three D rendering, but I would like to see at least an architect's, um, I don't know what the, the exact word is, the-
Perspective?
Perspective, perspective drawing of the building.
Okay. Uh, hold on one second. Let me just, I don't know, I, I, uh, let's just get this back up real quick. So, sorry, I'm a more of a Teams guy than Zoom. Sorry. All right, can I, everyone see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Oh. All right. So everyone can see my screen. So you, you, uh, a more architectural representation of this elevation?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so a, a elevation with, you know, a little more detail to it.
And you'll, you'll note that the rope light is gonna be in a cove?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, I'll, um, relay all this information back to the design team and see if we, I, I guess the best way to put it is we, we need to tighten it up, make it a little more presentable.
Yeah, we're, uh, you, you're eventually gonna go to the, we, we'd like to see basically, again, we don't need construction blueprints, but we'd like to see, we'd like to be able to tell the building inspector when you file for your building permit, that we have seen what you are proposing to build and it's acceptable.
Yep.
Um, so we have to get to the point that your, your design team has finished its work and has settled on a design, and the architect has at least rendered the outside of it. We don't care how you lay out inside. But we want to know is, what's, what's it gonna look like?
Okay. Yeah, no, let me, uh, let me go back to the design team and then, um, we will, uh, re- represent on the, the next town hearing, next meeting. Okay.
That's good, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good news is you've got everything that's required. You just gotta put it together in a better package. That's also, it's, it's a little more-
Refined.
Yeah, okay. So I'll be, everything that you've, you've got so far meets zoning and we're good with it. Just assemble it.
Okay. And, uh, when is the next town hearing again?
August. No, yes, August, August.
August sixth.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Are we all set with his site plan as well?
We'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll resolve everything on August sixth, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, uh, put the plug into my architects about a site plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be-
Okay, I think everyone else is here for the rest of the show, so, uh, probably we could move on to the, uh, opening the meeting of the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yeah, um, so I don't know if we need a motion to open the meeting, or if we can just go ahead and, um, declare the meeting open, uh-
I want to say what trustees are here.
Yep, I'm just about to do that. Thank you. Um, so Molly Keegan, um, I'm the Select Board Representative, um, here with Jim Maximoski, Bill Dwyer, Mark Dunn, Mike Sarzinski, and Joe Zagradnick. And I will call the meeting officially to order at seven ten.
All right.
Okay.
Good. Well, I have the agenda up in front of me here.
I'll tell you what, I'll, why don't I just pop the agenda on the screen so people don't have to go scrambling for it? I'll just leave it up for a moment. Yeah.
Seen it there, so let me-
Okay, so it looks like the first item on the agenda is to review the, uh, forty R smart zoning grant progress. Discuss the impact of any of the Hampshire Mall foreclosure, review the UMass LARP studio exercise regarding the Hampshire Mall property.
You want me to lead off with the forty R, uh, smart growth? Can I also introduce, uh, Kyle Genal to, from PBPC to co-present?
That'd be great, Mark. Thank you.
Okay. Is Kyle on the, is he still here?
I'm here.
Okay, great. So we've met, uh, what would you say, Kyle, maybe half a dozen times?
I believe at this point, yes, six.
Okay. Uh, we have a committee of, I believe it's six people.
Yes.
Um, we have gone over land use issues, uh, the goals of the study, and we have started, um, actually, we're, we're almost done with the, uh, survey for our first public engagement. And, uh, Kyle has put together a, uh, Kyle and Deborah have put together a, uh, introduction to that. Uh, actually, Kyle's put together what will go in the, is it the water mailing?
Yes, we've created a, an announcement that will go out into the August water bill for property owners.
And that will have a QR code and also have the actual, um, URL typed out for anyone to then go to the, uh, online survey, which has, I don't have a half a dozen questions, I think.
I believe it's up to eight now.
Eight now, okay. Um, trying to get some feedback.
So, Mark, have, have you kind of made a parameter of what property you will be talking about?
So far, I think we're focusing on Route Nine from the Bike Path Tunnel East. So we're staying out of the Village Center or between the Village Center and the Connecticut River. But, uh, we're, we've been assuming a focus on Route Nine.
So, so from higher, that entire area would be forty R?
No, that's the area we're looking at and we're, and we're asking, asking for feedback.
Okay. Al, Kyle specifically said last night that you can't spot pick for forty R. Okay, so you, you couldn't pick three buildings. You probably couldn't even pick Hampshire Mall. It has to be, as far as I could tell last night, a major part of Route Nine.
I don't know. I don't know that he got into-
We, we've been asking that question for several months and it's still not resolved then.
Well, I think we're, if the minutes were of last night's meeting reflect that you cannot spot pick, and it has to be a large part. And if you don't tell the state what they want, you're not gonna get anything, okay?
I think, Mike, my take on it was that we can't pick one or two parcels, but we might be able to pick a section of that. I don't think we have to do the whole thing. That was not my, uh, impression. That's what they would like, and they've expressed themselves. But I was hoping we could find something in between that, maybe a few preferred areas, one or two. And then we would discuss this with PBPC and see if we can float that by the state. But that's, that's my impression. We haven't really gotten down to pinning down geographic.
Could you comment on that, Kyle, please? Didn't you say last night that we couldn't pick two or three properties?
Yes, so in conversation with the, uh, planners in the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities that review forty R applications, they've stated that they discourage and, uh, rarely, uh, approve forty R districts that are single parcels. So they're looking for, um, areas of concentrated development, um, that typically are already zoned for a mixture of commercial and residential. That total area is limited to, like, I think upwards of twenty to twenty-five percent of the total area of the, uh, municipality. Of course, that's not what we're interested in. Um, so we, in building the survey and trying to get initial input from the community as to what they would look for and um, a smart growth zone or district, um, we're focusing on the areas along Route Nine from the Bike Pass Underpath, the Bike Path Underpass eastward to Amherst Town Line based on, um, feedback from the housing production plan. So it was a similar kind of delineation from that survey, um, where we got more feedback into, you know, what was, uh, of interest from the community. So this is only the first step in what the Steering Community Committee has requested of a three-step, um, approach to engaging with the community. So, right now, the survey doesn't really get into the specifics of location. It more gets into the amenities and kind of the built form and features of smart growth. It really is introductory to concepts and elements of a smart growth district, which would be different housing type ho- uh, typologies. So what we would call missing middle, um, you know, row houses, condos, um, some apartment buildings of certain sizes, uh, duplex, triplex, uh, stacked flats. Uh, even we could explore cottages or smaller, uh, type, uh, developments. Um, and then the second approach that the Steering Committee is interested in, in moving forward and engaging the community is a series of focus groups. They've identified, I believe, six stakeholder groups that they'd like to invite to have conversations with them to get more specifics. And I believe it's in that phase where we're start to get more, uh, precise understanding of where this type of zoning would be preferred. And then the third leg of this strategy would be our community-wide, um, meeting. We haven't discussed what the preferred format for that is as of the, uh, this point. Uh, we have some options. Uh, and that's where we'll start to kind of bring it all together and invite a broader, uh, input from, uh, residents.
Kyle's doing an exceptional job, I think, as to, uh, le- leading this group. But he, he's also told us that you don't have any option but going through the ritual, the ritual of, uh, having these stakeholder meetings and public education and blah, blah, blah. It's not something you can say, no, we don't want to do. It's costly and the same people show up and it's really pointless. But we have to do it because when the state says jump, our response apparently is gonna be how high?
Well, well, Mike, this, this- Well, well, Mike, this, this way, I thought this was a suggestion. It appears we are not leading as a planning board. We're being led as a planning board. For example, do we realize that part of that area is zone industrial and that housing is not going to be allowed? What is the capacity of the SOARF if a lot of housing is going in? What will this do to the business district? When you put housing, as much as that term smart goes to thrown around. Kyle, there was a three or four-story apartment building that went up on the Amherst Town Line. And the neighbors who lived in the backyard there in a big housing complex located in Hadley strenuously objected to it. So the complex did not get built. It, in fact, it, they had to knock down two stories because the people objected. The minute you put housing close to businesses in a significant number, they will scuttle businesses. So ultimately, the building that went up is only two stories. So the smart growth concepts, the terminology sounds wonderful, but nevertheless, if you look at the whole area, put apartments in there, I think it would scuttle our business opportunity district.
If I could interrupt, or are you done?
Yep.
I'd, I'd like to say two things. One, going back to Mike made a good point that some people might misinterpret. I, what I heard last night was that we cannot pick just a couple parcels. And I think that's common sense and Kyle can correct me, but I think that's common sense legal ethics. Because we could say, oh, we're only going to allow development on Joe's property and Mike's property, and then we're showing favoritism. So we have to have some very, you know, some variety. And I hear your concerns. But that's kind of like telling us what nails we can use when we haven't even shaped the building yet. Those are things that we want that input later on, say, well, you can't do this there, you can't do that. And those all, those are all valid concerns. But I don't want to shut this down. And, and my expectation is that we weren't coming in with a set. This is where we're gonna put this, if any, affordable 40R or whatever we, we decide makes most sense based on public input. We're trying to explore all options right now. And I hear your concerns. But we're not, you know, I don't, just like you, I don't want to open up a whole flood zone of, of, that's not the word I mean, but I don't want to open the floodgates and have, you know, eighteen apartment buildings. No, that's obviously, I don't think any of us want that. But we're just in the process of exploring where we could go without coming in with a prescribed expectation. And inviting, like you just had, a public input.
One of the reasons I wanted to go through this exercise and one of the reasons I wrote the grant application the way I did is that we've been talking about 40R at this, what, sixty thousand foot level? And I understand the concepts of it inside and out, but what I don't understand is what a bylaw is going to look like. And that's what I hoped we were going to see out of all of this.
It's, it's a long time in the future to get that bylaw.
Which segues into a related problem. That Kyle has identified that the grant funding that we obtained through the district local technical assistance might not be able to stretch far enough to get us beyond the focus groups and survey to the point of actually drafting a bylaw that we could actually look at. So Kyle has identified other funding sources, other grant funding sources. And I know, Kyle, you said that the grant wants support from the planning board and the select board. Would it also be helpful to have support from, from this board, the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I believe a letter of endorsement for the grant would be very supportive.
So who will actually apply for the grant?
So the proposal is, will be drafted by me, but it'll be submitted by the town administrator. More likely to be positively received from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. If we want to get into that topic, we can jump right in, but I don't know if we want to kind of backtrack and just clarify some of the points that were brought up.
I'm just wondering whether or not we should just pull the plug on this whole thing.
Well, I would.
After you make these glowing statements, now you want to pull the plug. But nevertheless, there's one other comment I would like to make. Yes, Hampshire Mall has declared bankruptcy. I've heard from fairly reliable source that a, the banks have hired a new a new group to run the mall. This group is much bigger than the Pyramid Group and they have a tremendous amount of clout. So we're almost interfering with a private enterprise that's going to perhaps revitalize the mall in some way, shape or form. And, and now everybody's saying, well, that's going to be apartments. I saw that rendering of apartments in the Hampshire Mall when I was going to the Apple Store when I was getting one of my first computers, that was ten, twelve years ago. And that was done by the University of Massachusetts students. And then there was another one four years ago, and then there was one last year. So it appears that the University of Massachusetts is recycling this this problem to the students every few years that would be a wonderful place for apartments, so.
So I'm, I'm going to, just, just to keep this on track, I'm going to make a motion that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund support an application for further grant funding to pursue 40R.
I would second the motion.
I'm going to say motion made by Bill and Mark, did you just second that?
I did.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion on the table?
Yes, what is this, what is this application about?
This is to get.
What is the cost to the town? I read a little bit about it, but I'm kind of confused because it was fifty thousand mentioned, thirty thousand mentioned.
I think those are maxims. I think we have to match. So we would have to see how much we could leverage to put on the table and I'll let, I'll let Kyle speak to that.
Yes, so in the initial email, I gave you the, the maximum award possible would be fifty thousand for this round of, and for this grant funding. There is a requirement of a twenty-five percent match from the town. The budget provided by the direct local technical assistance grant is eligible and qualifies for matching funds. And I believe that in order to cover the required, to, to cover the agreed upon scope under the DLTA grant, we really would only request twenty thousand from this funding source. So we, so we could leverage the entirety of the DLTA budget as match from.
And as twenty-five percent, that you could go off to twenty-two thousand five hundred to get a total of thirty thousand.
Yeah, so it would really, it would allow us a comfortable amount of money to work on bylaw language. It would, it would essentially be three tasks. Grant administration, we'd put a little bit of the budget aside just so that, because there is quarterly reporting required and a final report at the conclusion of the project. We would put aside us, another section of the budget for concluding engagement and synthesizing community input. And then we have put a bulk of that budget request, ten thousand at least, to actually drafting bylaw language. Because as referred, referenced by Mr. Dwyer in the original request for DLTA funding, there is the ask for an actual, a proposal that the planning board could get behind to advance to annual town meeting. So it's really to close that gap and give us funding so that we can sit down, write bylaw language that could be simple revisions. It could be the full 40R application which requires a line-by-line revision of a model bylaw. It has been, that model bylaw has been provided to the Steering Committee as an appendix to the land use survey and bylaw review. So the, the, the request would be for twenty thousand dollars from the Commonwealth through the Planning Assistance Grant. I, on behalf of the town, would draft the application. We would appreciate the endorsement, letters of endorsement from the Affordable Housing Trust, the Planning Board and the Select Board. There would be a letter of endorsement from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission since we are technically providing the matching funds. And then that would be submitted from the town, from town administrator.
So what, what's the town obligation?
If we move, if we move forward with a twenty thousand dollar request, there's no obligation.
So it's, so Joe, it's no money out of our pocket. It's leveraging the grant we already got from PBPC to get a larger grant. And I just want to add here, and again, Kyle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it became clear to me over the last cou- couple of meetings, and I think early on we talked about we're going to do this, we'll be done at the end of the calendar year, and then we'll have something to present at the spring. If we have anything, we could present it at the Springtown meeting, the annual town meeting. I'm not feeling like that's really likely to happen. I think this will take more thought and more development. Maybe by that time, we have it to the point where we need to start developing, you know, if we find an area and what approach we want to take, then we need to write zoning ordinance, which might be another DLTA, I, you know.
What, what's the timeframe of this, this process that you're proposing, Kyle, has to be completed?
So the application for the grant needs to be submitted pretty urgently, next Monday at four PM submissions are due. In terms of the funding, it is required to be spent by the end of fiscal year twenty-six. So we could stretch the money.
We have quite a bit of time.
If we wanted to stretch it that long, we, we could, yes.
I don't think stretching it, I think.
Right, or, yeah.
Yeah.
So Kyle, the proposal, some of the basic questions that I ask is, do we have sewer capacity if we're going to put apartments in that area from the, from the Bike Path Tunnel to the Amherst Line?
That's in the questionnaire.
It's, so we, how should we know in the questionnaire? You've got to ask.
I know, I know, I know. They want, they want to know if you want to have parades too, or farmers markets.
You know, just, if I could just put this in perspective, first of all, creating a 40R district is not obligating the community to build a blessed thing. We are merely creating an environment that can be moved into by developers who are willing to do it. If the developer cannot get sewer connection, they're not going to build a blessed thing.
Well, on the other hand, if however, the state can make us put, get us additional sewer connection to obligate these people, which the state can overrule. It is a mandated situation.
So I just want to keep us on track from an open meeting law perspective. I think we're starting to really drift off topic into speculation about other areas. So again, there's.
I mean, Molly, this was mentioned from the tunnel all the way to the Amherst Line.
As, as a, Joe, what I heard is that that's the area under consideration. It's not the recommended district, right? This is just an area to look at so that we can determine based on feedback, surveys, et cetera, what might work best for the town of Hadley. So I think the only order of business on the table right now is a motion made and seconded to pursue this grant. It's time sensitive. Again, I think is, Mark has articulated and, and Bill as well, it's not obligating us to do anything. It's not costing the town anything additional out of pocket right now. It's merely to keep the process moving forward so we can continue to gather data. So just sticking with the grant topic, because we're going to continue with the discussion of the Hampshire Mall shortly. Is there any further thought relative to the grant?
I was just going to say that there are no assumptions at this point. Part of the survey is asking the the town's citizens, what would you prefer? You know, would you prefer infill duplexes, triplexes? Would you prefer, you know, what's, what scale? We're, we're just trying to get a sense of that. And if, if they say we don't want apartment buildings, we want to see smaller infill, then we might be looking at a different area if the town says, look in this area. We're just, you know. Joe, there's nothing set in concrete and there's nothing, as I understand it, that it's going to be shoved down our throat, right? I don't have the years of experience that you do, Joe, so.
So roll call?
So say motion made and seconded. So at this point, move to a roll call vote. Bill?
Dwyer, yes.
Joe?
Joe abstain.
Okay, Jim?
Jim, yes.
Mark?
Mark Dunn, yes.
Mike?
No.
Okay, and I will vote yes. So we have a vote of four in favor, one against, and one abstention. Okay, thank you.
And that's due, that's due Monday at four, is that what you said?
That's when the submission is due. If the letter can arrive to to my email inbox, before then, all the better. I will be sending the, the complete submission packet to Carolyn for her to send off to the, contact the program administrator at EEA.
We didn't mention the, the housing economic development. Is that one, that, that support letter is a possibility as well?
We're meeting on Thursday night. It's not on the posted agenda, although the, you know, an update relative to this is, but but select boards meeting tomorrow night, we'll certainly be able to take a vote there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion about the Hampshire Mall property. What I'd like to do at this point is just provide what, what little update I can. Carolyn Brennan and I, I believe about two weeks ago, maybe two, two and a half weeks ago, we were able to make contact with the new property manager, a gentleman named Ian. And he made it very clear that he is temporarily assigned. We asked specifically if he, what he could share about the intentions of the new owners. As Joe just pointed out, as we know, Wells Fargo and Deutsche Bank have taken the property onto their books at this point. And he indicated that his marching orders at this point was basically to keep everything up and running, business as usual. So continue to maintain the property, collect the rents from the existing tenants. So he said that, you know, his goal was to make sure that it was as seamless a transition as possible from Pyramid to his management company working again on behalf of the new owners. To his management company, um, working again on behalf of the new owners. Um, his expectation is that the. Um, there will be somebody um assigned from the management company of a more permanent nature. Um, and that likely would happen within the next few months at any rate. Um, the ask that Carolyn and I made was to stay as close as possible um. To the new owners and make sure that they knew that Hadley, the town itself, was a very interested party here. Given the size and the, and the um significance of that property to our commercial district. And wanted the opportunity to make them aware of the fact that some of these smart growth discussions are taking place, whether or not it impacted. Ultimately winds up impacting that parcel or not. Um, he said that he uh was very grateful to have that information. As a matter of fact, they're the property managers for the Kingston um collection. The other Pyramid property that we heard about from Lynn Gray, if you remember a couple of years back, um, where they had started the process of. Um, removing a portion of the, a portion of their uh retail mall space and. Were building, in that case, I believe they were kind of high-end luxury apartments with some affordable component down there. So that project was already underway. So he said, we're intimately familiar with this concept, if in fact. Zoning heads in that direction and he would make sure that the new owners. Uh, again, uh, maintain some sort of open line of communication with the town. So that's all I can tell you tonight. I'm not, I haven't heard any other information. So if anybody knows anything different from that, um, tonight, please. Um, indicate so.
Is this housing trust, Molly, or should we be in regular session now? Is discussion about the Hampshire Mall Housing Trust stuff or not?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda tonight. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just working through the agenda.
Got it.
Yep. Okay, so I, I mean, you know, and obviously, I mean, the, the owners, um. They have deep pockets, you know, they must, it's not clear that they necessarily have a particular uh. Agenda or anything in mind. I, I would just make, you know, a mental leap that. Maintaining the mall in, in perpetuity is that exists right now. I can't imagine that that's their long view. And the reason for the purchase, but we, no, we don't know that. So. Um, I just want to make sure that whether it's, you know, the Planning Board, Housing and Economic Development Committee, the Select Board, Town Administrator, that. You know, we do everything we can to try to uh keep some sort of communication going. So that we don't wake up one day, um, and there's some brand new project in front of this board that we didn't see coming. And, and I, I guess to that end, I've got a question for uh the Planning Board. So right now, given the current zoning, you know, where the mall is. What other types, with existing zoning, what other types of construction could occur there?
The business they could, with that property, they could put in one dwelling. One house, that's it. On the whole property, it's allowed one house. And they could, they could put in any kind of businesses they would want, reasonable, that that falls within the description of the bylaw, you know. More stores, more restaurants, uh, gas station probably wouldn't be permitted because it's in, most of it's in the aquifer.
Uh, ware- warehouse, Jimmy, or?
It's not industrial. That, that property is only zoned business.
Okay.
Is owned industrial.
It would support a residential real estate development as an alternative to the mall.
Yeah, that would be a subdivision.
A sub, yeah, you could do a subdivision.
But you'd probably have to level the mall to do that. And that would be difficult. Look, because P- P- Target owns their own property.
Right.
And they have. A very complex right of way for parking, et cetera. Um, I remember when that was proposed, I think uh it was done with uh Pete McConnell. I think he said the agreement for. A group for Pyramid and Target is pages thick. So.
A uh, a hotel would be allowed in there, office buildings.
Conference Center.
Yes, yes, Conference Center.
Hot chicken.
Hot chicken.
Chicken coops. Big farm. With, you know. Anything else that you see up and down Route nine would pretty, pretty much be permitted there, with the exception of gas stations.
And, and uh, and industrial uses, you pointed out.
Correct.
And under the current, under the current zoning, it's one parcel, one dwelling.
Bill said, sub- subdividing it is a possibility.
A lot of the, uh, a lot of the mall property is outside the aquifer, though. It, it just clips the sort of the J C Penney side.
Okay. Okay, well, if that's the case, then you could put a gas station near the, near, closer to the Target store area. But that's about the limit of a, of any kind of a um. Built you a unit like that, you know, repair station, gas station.
All right, that's helpful. I mean, I, I think, you know, it's good for, to ra- remind people. You know, with, in the absence of any change of zoning, there are only a certain. Well, technically a finite number of uses for that property, but there's still opportunity for them, if the new owners to. Kind of reimagine within the context of strictly commercial as well.
If they subdivided, they might have a parking issue, but they could always build a parking garage to get their density.
Yeah, a, a parking garage would definitely be a possibility if it was cost feasible.
Okay, is there anything else relative to the, the Hampshire Mall that anybody? Wants to talk about? Otherwise, the next uh agenda item is an update on the University LARP project. All right, um, so relative to that, um, what I wanted to report out on. Because, as you know, it was the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Um, that initiated this with the university. So what the university did was they. Utilized their uh spring semester project. Um, and it was one of the first times they did a combined project for the. Primarily upperclassmen. I think there were some underclassmen involved, but primarily upperclassmen came together from both the landscape architecture. Um, and regional planning groups. Um, and they were assigned an, an exercise. And again, that's all it was. It was an exercise. This is something that they could have done on their own without approaching the town of Hadley, but. We, you know, we're looking for ways to collaborate um and have more engagement, positive engagement with the university. So uh, they spent the entire semester um working through that. I think at about some point, the uh landscape folks kind of dropped out and then just left the, the architectural group in place. To do their design work. So um, just uh first week of July. Uh, the head of the program got permission to send us, um, provide us with access to their Google Drive. As you can imagine, a lot of these design renderings are pretty uh significant in terms of, you know, it's not something you can attach to an email easily and share. Um, if you'd like to see an example of one of the drawings, I'm happy to do a screen share and pull one up for you. Um, recognizing this is just one example of what, what the students did. So would that be of interest?
I think so.
Yep. Um, Bill, will I be able to share?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see if I can. Stop sharing for a second and just see if I can.
I, I had mentioned it yesterday's meeting that I went to the last meeting, or I mean, the last presentation. I didn't go to the earlier ones. And they had different teams and different teams had different percentages of the existing mall. That they would keep, so. As their parameters.
Okay.
If you're really old school, uh, these are on the wall outside of Target. What used to be the entry to Best Buy and the uh. Was it another chicken restaurant that was in there for a while?
It was the wings.
Hot wings is, yeah.
Buffalo, buffalo.
Buffalo, hot wings, yeah. It's in that little, that little foyer out there, just outside the. Mall, indoor mall entrance to uh Target.
Correct. Very similar to the one that I saw at the Boyok Mall previous to that, so. This is evidently an assignment that goes on every few years. It's like, I don't think it's a unique project.
So um, so this actually not true. For, just from the standpoint that this is something, again, that they had never done between both the landscape architecture and. And the regional planning. Um, it was one that we gave them several options. Um, they wound up choosing the Hampshire Mall. We had asked them, you know, they could have done the Hadley Town Center. You know, coming over the bridge and what that might look like. So again, the idea behind it really was not to provide them with any constraints. They fully understood that it's not zoned for what they would want it to be, to make this happen. And. You know, again, the idea was to conceptually develop plans so that people could. You know, really start thinking about what the mall could look like. Um, so just the one in front of you right now, the groups were assigned different constraints. So in one case, uh, there was a subset that said that they had to uh keep the mall fully intact. They had to preserve a hundred percent of the mall. Another group, I think, was seventy-five percent and then a third, like fifty percent. So in the one that you're looking at, um, here, they've kept the majority of the mall. This would be Target over on the. Right-hand side as you're looking at it. Uh, the Cinemark theaters in the back here. They've carved off portions, you know, from Dix and J C Penney's on, and then they wound up putting in some residential housing units. Um, these two bow-shaped structures would be housing. And then they had to figure out how much parking did they need? How could they add green space? You know, in some cases, they had walking trails in the back here where it moves towards. The wet areas. They knew that they had to preserve Trader Joe's, you know, the new Chase site, et cetera. So, you know, each group came up with their own idea. Um, in some cases, they built up, they had, you know, rooftop. Gardens, um, you know, all sorts of things. So again, it was intended to be an exercise and to engage with the students.
Do you remember what the, what the thinner buildings were? There's some thinner ones top, center and, and. Lower left. Yeah, tho- those dogleg shapes. Was that smaller housing? I can't remember.
Yeah, there were different types of housing. Yeah, and, and the reason that they came up with that idea was they were leveraging off of our own master plan. So they understood the desire to preserve green space, et cetera. But also the housing production plan indication that people were looking for more of that um kind of middle stock housing. So, you know, a- again, uh, you know, are, are we likely to rush out and ask them to come in and, and build this? I mean, who knows what the. The, the economics of any of this would be, but it was, um, you know, I think it was a fruitful endeavor with the university. And the university obviously thought so too, because I found out yesterday that they're actually eager to look at doing. Uh, another project of this kind. You know, again, whether they might pick the Hadley Town Center or something like that, I don't know, but. You know, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, some of the folks on, on the respective committees were able to get over there and, and see this. And knowing that not everybody has that opportunity, they have shared this Google Drive. Um, just today, I. Asked them to send it to the planning uh email address. So Bill, you should be able to see that in your planning inbox.
Yes, I did get that tonight, and I'll send it around to the rest of the board.
Okay.
Bill, may I be included in that?
Oh, Kyle, sure, yes. And Matt, you'd probably like that too.
I would, I would.
Is it fair to say we should not just share it willy-nilly, but within those of us identified at tonight's meeting? I mean, it's there. I don't know. Molly, what's your sense? Do they?
I think they're, they're fine with us sharing it with stakeholders, but you're right. I mean, I don't. On the Google Drive, you know, you need to get an access code and everything in order to. To tap into that, so, um, but they've certainly been very public with it, you know, because that ran the article on it and. I think the university appreciates the positive. Um, press on this, but, you know, they're really looking at it as a way to, to try to work cooperatively with the town. It's something that, um, for a long time now, we've been talking to the university about ways to partner. Um, and it's just a shame. I mean, you've got that amount of talent sitting in our backyard, um, and rarely do we ever tap into it. And, you know, kind of goes both ways. They haven't necessarily reached out either. So I think this is. Um, something of interest and another thought that, you know, um, we'll talk about it at our committee meeting. Tomorrow for Hadley, um, Housing and Economic Development, is the possibility of utilizing. I don't know if it's the regional planning team or economics or whom, but maybe partnering with the university to have data. Put around uh the idea of adding to housing stock, adding to commercial. Property. What, what is the actual dollar impact, right? It's not just property taxes. It's, you know, as we know. Full well, hotels being filled, it's sales tax revenue, and we don't have anybody. On staff that's able to do that work, um, nor do we have money lying around to hire somebody like Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do that work when they're. Focused on forty R right now. So, um, maybe there are ways for us to leverage um those resources, so.
So, um, Mark, to your point on distribution, as I said, they're posted, they're hung on the wall at the mall.
Okay, okay.
So, um, yeah, I, I, I don't.
I just thought it was worth asking.
Yeah, I'm not gonna send it to everybody on my uh agenda mailing list, but at the same time, uh.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think it's considered proprietary.
Okay, okay.
Just, just a few uh. Comments, uh, many years ago, when the uh Mountain Farms Mall was known as the Dead Mall. There was a group from the University of Massachusetts came in and they wanted to make a mini research park for the University of Massachusetts. Students and some people who were going on to form their own businesses. And that's uh, a couple of them have started there. And. This group, I don't know if Marcus, if it disappeared, but a research park in that area would, would employ a lot of people. And uh, that would be a possibility. And the other thing too, the University of Massachusetts always tries to say they're gonna be a good neighbor. However, we are wrestling with a battery, battery storage facility problem. Did you know that the University of Massachusetts has a battery storage facility located in Hadley? And they never did consult Hadley when they put it in. And it's a very, very large battery.
At least it's not in the aquifer, right? That is correct. It's not in the aquifer.
So there is a storm going on around there. Uh, I did hear from Happy Media, they got knocked off the air. And it looks like Joe just got knocked off the air.
Like the only ones left are you, me and Kyle. And Mike. Yeah, it looks like Joe and Mark are knocked off and Molly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we got. We got good new fiber in the East Street Commons. So by the way, Jim, did you ever find out if the, the, uh. A site plan for East Street Commons included sidewalks? I think it did.
I haven't had a chance to go look for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think people don't want them. That's, that's what I've been told, and they want to see if we got to amend the site plan here.
So I guess, uh, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting of the, uh. At eight o'clock of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion, okay. Molly's on, huh? Bill just got knocked off. Hey, Joe. Hello? Okay. Okay, I will act as the interim chairman. We have a motion in a second because the other members have been knocked off because of a storm. All in favor of the adjournment?
I, uh, Dwyer, I.
Nexomaski, I.
Terzinski, I.
Motion passes with only three of us present.
Everybody got knocked off except for Jimmy and, uh, Bill and Kyle.
Yeah, and you.
Zeke?
Joe just called me when he tried to go through the phone, just the phone, the call failed.
Joe? Did you call, you just called me?
Joe just tried calling me on my cellphone, and when I.
I know.
He was blank.
You want to vote, you want to vote on the motion to, uh, uh. In the, uh, Affording, Affordable Housing Trust meeting?
I can't vote. I don't know what's going on now.
Okay, we do, just, we voted to adjourn because we lost three of you.
So just vote to adjourn.
Yeah, don't even, we're set.
This is a first, this is a first. Make sure the notes reflect that he voted on Mike, Mike Sersinski's iPhone.
Are you, are you going to pick me up then, Mike?
Yeah, I will pick you up.
Okay.
It's gonna be a while. Okay, bye.
I can't open the garage door, so.
Oh, you lost electricity. Okay, okay, bye-bye.
Well, that diverged.
Back to the planning board. We, well, we never voted to, we never voted to, to, to suspend it, so we're still an active planning board.
Okay, so we're up to, uh, I to B, uh, PVPC.
Okay, um. All right.
I think the most urgent and, um. Certain, uh, agenda item would be review and, um, acceptance of Planning Board Assistance Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five. Contract and scope of services.
Okay. Oh, yeah, for the, the same motion we made with the, uh, Housing Trust Fund, right?
Um, this would be.
Yeah, yeah, let's, uh, let's adopt, let, let's, uh, accept.
Going on because we got a quorum.
What was that, Bill?
Let's, uh, uh, so what Kyle's proposing is we accept the work program.
Yep, and I can pull that up real quick.
Adopted contract for FY twenty five.
The meeting's still going on because we got a call.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Adopted fiscal year twenty five contract. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell you that, bye.
So the contract was provided, written, uh, to be, um, level with the, uh, fiscal year twenty four funding. Uh, totaling, uh, uh, not, not to exceed ten thousand dollars and no cents. Um, in terms of the scope of services. And I reinserted the Planning Board rules and regs since there's some, uh, just fine revisions still outstanding. Um, as well as the Town Permitting Guide, uh, and then the zoning bylaw. Um, I inserted three B Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw Review and Update based on conversation we had, I believe, back in May. Uh, just speaking to the fact that, that bylaw hasn't been thoroughly reviewed in, uh, decades now, so. Um, that's really the bulk of it. Um, I believe you've had this for a little while, but, uh, invite any conversation or questions.
Okay. Looks pretty much like we've had in the last number of years. Except for the above, been changing around a little bit, and obviously, though, the scope of work changes according to.
I did ask Kyle, and I copied, uh, Jim on it, I think, that, um. Let's see, we have, uh, it's like Mark trying to get back in on his phone. So let me put that in, um. That, uh, I, I've been carrying this, uh, adopt standard conditions for special permits forever. Uh, but I'd like to just, uh, move that along, um, so that I don't have to read a four-page motion. I could just read a one-page motion and say that the extra, the next six pages are our standard conditions, which can be found in the regulations.
Right. Um, I did add that little caveat to, uh, that first, uh, piece. Um, and Bill, I'll, um, connect with you, uh, via email. I, I haven't confirmed the latest version that is on my end.
All right, um, any questions on the contract?
Uh, I'm sorry, I got nothing. We lost power. What did I miss?
Okay, we voted to adjourn the Housing Trust Fund meeting. We're back in the planning board meeting.
Okay.
And we are discussing the annual contract with PVPC.
So Linda just came in and said that there is an emergency tornado alert.
There is. It just came through from UMass as well. I just.
Alert's worse than a watch, isn't it? Or is watch worse than an alert?
Before I got disconnected, I was, you, you might have seen me turning. I was watching our, our deck furniture fly across the yard.
Jesus.
So. Mark, you're from the Midwest. Is, is warning worse than an alert or vice versa?
I think warning, no, watch, warning, and then alert. I don't know.
Really? So alert's the worst?
I thought.
Well, we need more solar panels.
And I'm not from the Midwest.
So there are three important things. Um, I'm not sure that. I think we can pass over. Adopting the FY twenty five contract and take that up in, uh, at our next meeting, just because of what, what the hell is going on out there.
Okay.
Um. I sent around the. Town Council's response proposed. Okay.
Yes.
I sent around Town Council's proposed response to the, uh. Uh. Objection from zero point. Anybody have any additional thoughts on that?
Looks good.
No, I thought you did a great job.
I'll make a motion to, uh, agree with the Town Council, uh, comments.
Second.
Any comments? If not, roll call vote. All in favor, aye.
Mark Dunn, aye.
Dwyer, I.
Terzinski, I.
Sorry, Mike Sarzy, aye. You said that, Mike?
Yes, aye.
Okay, and Joe has been knocked off. So the motion passes four zero with one absent.
Molly, uh, we adjourned.
Perfect.
Yeah, I lost power, and I'm sure Molly lost power too.
Right.
And we have a tornado warning.
Uh, yep, it's in, apparently in Leverett, heading him up the hill to Shute's Ferry, so.
Okay. Okay, uh. And.
The, uh.
Oh.
The LTA grant.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, support applying for the supplemental grant.
That was the Planning Assistance Grant, I believe that's called.
Right, correct.
I would second that.
Your motion in a second. In the other discussion, hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mark Dunn, aye.
Dwyer, I.
Maximaski, I.
Terzinski, I.
Of course, Tagradnik is absent, so the motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you. Let him figure that photo.
Um. Bobby should do a motion to adjourn, Mr. Dwyer.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I would second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Terzinski, I.
Nexomaski, I. Meeting is history. Thank you, everyone.